Welcome everybody tonight to the Committee of the Hall for our September the 15th, 2020 meeting. The City Council should have the minutes from our September the first Committee of the Hall meeting, or the additions or corrections to those minutes. If not, do I have a motion to approve?
Seven.
I have a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And the minutes carry. Tonight on our agenda, the primary, we've got a couple of things to talk about during the Committee of the Hall. The first topic is the extension of the state of local emergency. Leading up to tonight's meeting, I have spent time talking to leadership from the hospital slash the university, as well as the university, to gauge where did they think we were in regards to our current order and what our order is addressing. Both of those entities that I talked to, Dr. Fred Kim and Mr. Steve Pelham, both strongly encouraged us to continue to extend this order. And I've got some talking points I just would like to share with the council and for those that are listening. This week, we've seen positive numbers that have come from the medical center and from the university. And we're happy to see that those cases, that the hospitalizations seem to be stabilized and came down over the weekend in our latest numbers we were shared. And then obviously today, the university reported a pretty significant decrease in the number of positive cases from campus. But as Dr. Kim said today, these numbers show one thing, and that's what we are doing is working. It's tempting, obviously, to rush back into business as normal. And as bad as I personally would like to see that happen on behalf of those that are impacted, now is the time not to do that. And we must continue to stay the course just for a little while longer. We're all excited about the about next week's first Auburn football game. And we know it won't be a full house, but there are four more games the rest of the year. And we look forward to hopefully, our football weekends changing and evolving. And as we play LSU and Tennessee and Texas A&amp;M later in the fall, hopefully, hopefully, there might even be more people there. We're excited about the number of students that are with us and having a full house on campus this year, this to this point after five weeks. And I believe we would all want those young people to be with us until Thanksgiving as they complete their semester. So we've made it this long. There's been a number of sacrifices that have been made. And I appreciate the attitudes and the willingness of those who have made those sacrifices. But I'm asking the council tonight to extend this emergency order for three more weeks until October the 7th, just to give us some more time to continue to improve the situation. Comments from the council? Or thoughts?
Does this include the prohibition from serving alcohol when not seated?
Yes, that's the emergency order. That is the, you could call that the heart of what we did in our emergency orders.
Nothing has changed.
Nothing has changed.
To date.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else?
I'll speak up, Ron.
Sure, Jay.
You know, I appreciate what we've tried to do, at least in essence here with this this order. And frankly, in spite of those reports, positive reports from our hospital and our university, I, you know, I'm not going to support an extension of this, this, this order. You know, I know that that's exactly what they don't want us to do. You know, I've read the same press release. You know, I think that we, and I expressed this, this opinion a few weeks ago, you know, but we're pushing them off, off campus, you know, out of town or around town. Not, just because they're not downtown doesn't mean they're congregating. And, you know, I believe we've even had some, some, some social distancing citations issued to house parties, you know, around town. And I, you know, I think in some very informal conversations with public safety, you know, they're still seeing students congregate. And so obviously, we can't legislate morality. We can't legislate common sense, but we can legislate someone out of business. And I just don't think that this is going to be the magic wand that keeps, keeps these students from congregating. And I just think that, you know, and I don't, I don't think the sky is falling. I know this doesn't, you know, this may be an effort to keep the skies from falling. But I just can't in good, good faith, support an entertainment district downtown for two, the first two football games, and then tell our downtown businesses, they can't have people walk up and order a beer at the bar. You know, I think, you know, not to, to try to push off on, on public safety or, or speak for them, I should say, you know, but we're going to have masses downtown rolling tumors corner, hopefully. And we're going to have to make split decisions on groups of people at Tumors Corner, walking down the street during our entertainment district. And then they're going to turn around and have to look inside a building and decide if someone's walked up to the bar or not, you know? And so I don't, I just don't see the need for an overreach of this, of this magnitude. And I've said enough, sorry.
Thank you, Jay. Yeah. Thank you, Jack. And I hope we're rolling tumors too, man. Anyone else? Okay, what will be done is later on in the agenda, under other business, we would vote on this. So my question to the council now, would, would you be positive in moving this forward to vote on this exact resolution later on in the agenda? Is everybody comfortable with that? Voted up and down later on in the agenda, under other business?
So Mayor, will we have an opportunity to discuss it in other business once a motion is made?
Sure. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Mayor, real quick, do we, do we have, or Jim, do we have numbers, like, I guess we've got some university numbers and hospital numbers, kind of trend numbers to show? Have we got that data here tonight to see where we, where we're trending with infections and in hospitalizations?
I think the, I don't have the numbers here tonight with me. I think last we saw there were maybe 30 hospitalizations. I think the university numbers are, when we say trending, they're still going up, still finding people that are infected with COVID, but they're not increasing at the rate that they thought they would. So while they're still trending up, the, the number of cases per period, whether it's per week or, or per two weeks, is going down.
Do we, do we know with those hospitals, the hospitalizations, if those are Lee County, how that split amongst the five counties that EMAC services? Do we know how that's broken down?
I don't have those numbers with me right now.
Okay.
The latest report was sent to you yesterday, Brett, but it wasn't granular, like you're asking, as far as what counties people came from.
And I don't, I don't know how much that plays into it. But I mean, I, that's, I think that's, you know, if it's all concentrated in one county, like Chambers County, then that, you know, that may play into a part as to policy going forward. But no, I don't know that that actually plays into it. Thank you.
Yeah. The Lee County numbers are actually becoming more positive, but they aren't good yet. I think we, we've gone from, from epidemic, or I don't know what the terminology is, but we've gone from that to high. We're down one, one step. Trying to get down to the level of contained. But yeah, Lee County is still shown as a hotspot in the state. Actually, there are very few parts of the state that aren't hotspots.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Brett. If you got more questions, we can ask them later on in the agenda. Okay? So don't, just write them down. We'll get to them later. All right. So with any other comments, or I haven't heard anything from either the rest of the council. This is one of the odd things of doing this on Zoom. So I'm going to presume that we'll move this forward into other business. We'll have a motion in second, and we'll have discussion on it at that point in time. Okay? All right. Entertainment District, Jim?
So I do have a couple of items on the agenda. If council is amenable, we'll, we'll move them to other business. One is the downtown entertainment district that Mr. Hovey talked about. The other is a, a alcohol beverage license, off-premise alcohol beverage license for Pride Food Mart, which is a convenience store gas station that they hope to open before our next meeting. And they're located next to
Off of Glen Avenue.
Off of Glen Avenue.
On Bow and Arrow.
Next to Bow and Arrow, right.
Yeah.
And then there's one other thing I need to bring to your attention. Under ordinances, we need to reorder the first two items under ordinances. So we will take item 8B1 first, and then 8A second. Those should have been reordered on the agenda because we have to first discuss the pre-zoning, if council's amenable to that, before the property is, is considered for annexation. So council is okay with all of that?
Everybody okay with that? Everybody understanding?
Could you repeat that one more time, please?
Under the ordinance, under the ordinance part?
Yes, sir.
So we will be taking item 8B1 before we address item 8A. So 8B1 is the pre-zoning of, of some property. If it were to come into the, to the city, they would like to understand that it, that the council is amenable to pre-zoning it before they bring that property into the city.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Everybody good with all those changes and those additions, then we'll move forward. Before we end the meeting, the Committee of the Hall, Jim, October 6th, Committee of the Hall, you've invited Chief Anderson to come and speak to the council. I just thought you might want to let the council members know about that.
So on the October 6th meeting, we will have Chief Anderson address you. Just to give him an opportunity to let you know what our police are doing, how effective they are. I'm very proud of, of a police organization. They are very good at what they do. We've seen that. They continue to be very quick at catching the bad guys. And I thought it was a good time to have the chief come and talk to you, give you some stats about our crime, our crime stats and what our police are doing to keep us, to keep us safe. So he will be here on the 6th.
Good. Thank you. We look forward to hearing from Chief Anderson. Appreciate his time.
Okay, so is he, are you saying that he's speaking on, at, at the Committee of the Hall? Is that what you said?
Yes, on October 6th meeting.
Okay. I hope he'd been caught the bad guy in my situation by the 6th.
What do you say? Okay. If that's all, do we have a move, motion to adjourn the Committee of the Hall?
I'm moved.
I'm moved.
All right. The Committee of the Hall is adjourned. We are past seven o'clock. So Lindsay, if you'd like to go ahead and get started with the roll call.
Dawson?
I'm here.
Okay. Dixon?
Here.
Griswold?
He's here. I can see him.
Here.
Ovi?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Smith?
Present.
Taylor?
Here.
Witten?
Here.
Anders?
Here. At this time, I will stand with the flag that you can see right here and lead us in a pledge of allegiance. And then afterwards, we will have a moment of silence. Okay? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Go ahead, Jim.
To the Republic, where it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Under Mayor's Communications, speaking of our police and fire, I want to appreciate the good people at St. Michael's for conducting a blue mask last Friday, where they, they held a service remembering the horrors of 9/11, but also honoring those people that are with our fire and police who do such a great job for us each and every day. I want to remind our community that the United Way kickoff is this Friday, and they're doing an unusual production of having a drive-through kickoff. Just encourage everybody to think about their contributions. If the United Way is a, they do a great job. They support a lot of different organizations and nonprofits in our community. And it could be, if you feel so led, it could be a great place for you to provide some resources to help those in our community. There was a number of citizens in Auburn that spent some time last Saturday picking up trash along North College Street. And I appreciate them doing that. That was very kind of them to be organized and take the time on Saturday morning to do that. And I applaud their efforts. And one conversation, which is a part of when Auburn, our next guest will be Dr. Taffey Clayton from Auburn University, and we will be filming that interview next week. And hopefully, we'll have it out on the city's social media sometime before the end of September. Okay? All right. Is any other council members that might have anything that they would like to announce or say at this point done? Okay. As we do, as we have done since we started with COVID, we have filmed our Employee of the Month recognition, our Service Award recognitions, and our retirement recognitions. Again, I thank the staff for working hard on this. And at this point in time, we will show you our Employee of the Month and all the people that we want to recognize.
This is Mayor Ryan Anders, and we're proud tonight to introduce you to the September Employee of the Month and all of our outstanding employees who have been with Auburn for many years with their service awards. We're proud to recognize our September Employee of the Month, Christopher Lockhart. And today I have a memorandum from Katrina Cook, the Environmental Services Director for the City of Auburn. Chris began his employment with the city in 2004 as a service technician. His automotive maintenance skills led to his promotion to mechanic in 2010. Most recently, Chris was the lead installer for the Automatic Vehicle Location System project at Environmental Services. Through Chris's thorough attention to detail and work ethic, the AVLS project was completed two months ahead of schedule. Superseding his required duties, Chris has been key in prepping of vehicles and equipment to be sold for surplus at the end of their lifecycle. Over the years, he has spent many hours working late on the weekends to ensure vital equipment needed by Environmental Services Department is ready to use when the collectors arrive to perform their duties. Chris is known for his willingness to assist others, no matter the task and no matter the situation. Chris is driven to do an excellent job. He is very meticulous in the, in the task he performs and gives 100% of himself to every assignment that he is given. I am proud to nominate Chris Lockhart as the Employee of the Month for September 2020. Congratulations, Chris, and thank you.
So thank you to all of our employees. A special shout out to Michael Roberson, who's retiring and has done an outstanding job. He's worked with our school children for many years and has protected us well. And what a great guy and what a great attitude. And he'll be well missed here in our community. Councilman Dawson, I don't know if you want to say anything about Mr. Roberson, since I know y'all worked together for many years since he's retiring.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I worked a long time with Officer Roberson. He is one of those guys that everybody in the community likes and looks up to. He's done such a great job in our school system. And he will, he touched a lot of lives. And he's type officer we need more of nowadays. He's a first-class guy and really going to miss his ability to relate to the children in our school system here in Auburn.
Thank you, Tommy. I appreciate it. During the Committee of the Hall tonight, we talked about the extension of the state of local emergency, which the council agreed to put on the agenda, and that will come up under other business. There's been no changes to the extension of the local emergency. It's just that the, it will go through October the 7th. There will also be a resolution for an entertainment district to be held on Saturday of the Kentucky game, which I believe is September the 26th. And then Saturday of the Georgia game, even though that's an out-of-town game, the idea is to continue to have a, an entertainment district on that Saturday here in downtown. And then there wasn't one alcohol license that was added to our agenda tonight that'll be under other business for a new convenience store located off of Glen Avenue in Auburn that'll be opening soon before our next meeting. So that's what we did on the, during the Committee of the Hall. Are any other announcements from the council? Okay.
Yes, I have an announcement.
Sure. Go ahead, Ms. Taylor.
I just want to thank some of the citizens that came out on Northwest Auburn in the community to clean up that side of town. And I want to also give shouts out to Councilman Griswold for coming out and helping us out. And I just want to thank everybody that was able to participate and clean. And it was successful. It was hot, but it was successful. But we, we actually cleaned up some areas on Foster, um, help me out, Kelly, going up by the cemetery and Westview, up on Westview. And so everything was, you know, it was cleaned up and cleaned up very nicely. And so I just want to commend the people that came out and helped.
Thank you, Connie. We certainly appreciate all those people giving up of their free time to help make Auburn clean. So thank you for that. Anyone else in the council have an announcement? Okay. At this time, it's an opportunity for citizens to communicate on items on our agenda. These will only be items on our agenda. If you would please raise your hand, we will call on you. I would remind you that many, that there are a number of things, particularly with these rezonings. There's a couple of different items under ordinances later on in our agenda that have public hearings attached with those. And that would be the more appropriate place to make your comments. So, but if you have any other comments about anything else on our agenda tonight, under contracts and agreements, the tax abatements, any, any of the other stuff, let us know. Okay?
Might want to raise your hand.
Please raise your hand on the, your Zoom. Hit the raise your hand button. Okay.
Tara Brumfield?
Believe it's Tara Brumfield?
Yes, I'm here.
Sure. Okay, Tara. If you give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Tara Brumfield, and I live at 2233 Lee Road 266, Casita, Alabama, 36852.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I am sure that y'all have heard about another potential quarry coming to the northeast side of Lee County on Lee Road 177 and Highway.
Tara, Tara, excuse me. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes, sir.
This is a time for comments on items that are on our agenda tonight. And we do not have, we do not have an item on our agenda related to the quarry. There is an opportunity at the end of our agenda tonight that is called Citizens Open Forum, where you can address the council about anything. And I would ask that you wait until then to make these comments. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Anyone else? Items on the agenda. Citizens Communications for items on the agenda. Okay. All right. We'll move ahead to City Manager's Communications.
So this evening, we're, we're announcing three vacancies on the tree commission. The three-year terms will begin November 8th, 2020, and end November 7th, 2023. These appointments will be made at the October 20th, 2020 City Council meeting. Next item on the, the next item of business on our agenda is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item separately?
Yes, I would, please.
Go ahead.
Item 7D2.
Seven D is a dog?
D is in David, two.
I got you. All right. Anyone else? Jim, I'd like to remove item 7B1 and 2. 7B1 and 2. All right. Anyone else? Okay.
So item 7B1 is, is a tax abatement for WP Holdings at 979 West Veterans Boulevard.
Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. I wanted this removed because I really wanted to just commend our economic development team and tell them thank you in a time where people are struggling, in a time that's really bleak in some areas. Here we are tonight, bringing a company in to replace a company that left us suddenly. And item number two, we've got a company that asked for an abatement based on $29 million, and they're coming back to us a little while later. And they're asking the one to invest $66 million. So I'm thankful that Auburn is a great community to live in, to do business in. And I'm thankful for that staff that works so hard to make these projects and these kind of things happen. Any other comments or questions from the council?
Mayor, I'd like to echo what you just said. I think we're very blessed to have such outstanding economic development department and the leadership of Philip Dunlap. And I really do appreciate that as a citizen of Auburn, their hard work.
I concur, Tommy. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Item 7B2 is a tax abatement for Shidwa Auto USA Corporation at 2535 West Tech Boulevard, or West Tech Lane. I'm sorry.
Move for approval.
Have a motion in second. Any comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries as well.
Item 7D2 is Linda Henry Dean, accepting a warrant, or we are accepting a warranty deed and screw compensation of $22,600 for property located at 427 South College Street. This is for the resurfacing, widening, traffic signals, and draining improvements on the South College Street, Gate Street, and Sanford Avenue project.
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Comments or questions, Ms. Wood?
Yes. If, Jim, as a city manager, could you just walk through that and tell us how many different property owners that we're working with and kind of what the average rate, I guess, per square foot that we're working with on those, on different property owners and what the value of this is to the improvement of that area, please?
So I'll let, I'll let Allison Frazier talk to that more specifically. But generally, what we do is we contact the landowners in the area. We do an appraisal on the property. We, sometimes we get the property for no compensation. But sometimes the, the property owner will want compensation. And so we, we go by whatever the appraised value is. We have a little bit of wiggle room, but mostly we have to stick within a certain percentage of the appraised value. But Allison, you can address that more, more detail than I did.
Yes, I think we have approximately 25 parcels for this project that we're working with. We do go We do go through, this is partially funded by ALDOT, so we are following the Uniform Act for right-of-way acquisition. We appraise the properties. We have to have a review appraisal. ALDOT then reviews those documents, return them to us, and then we have an agreed-upon price. The prices vary based on the size, but of course, the appraiser uses comparable properties to assess those values. So we're getting down to the wire. We have, I think, about five parcels left to acquire, but we are following the guidelines set out by the Federal Uniform Act as well as the ALDOT procedures.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Was this the 22,600, was that the appraised value or was that a negotiated price?
It should be the appraised value. And it also includes, it would include the right-of-way, any temporary construction easements or improvements within the area that we acquired.
And Jim, you mentioned that some property owners do that at no charge. Has anybody on this project, do we know of, that's not charging the city a fee for this?
We had a couple of parcels at the beginning of the project. I want to say maybe Amsterdam Cafe and perhaps the church, Trinity Church. I think those project, those properties were donated and we didn't have to pay for those.
With, with this particular house, this doesn't fall into like historic preservation, I mean, they didn't have to go through any kind of issues like that with making changes to the property, does it?
We did not. We, we received clearance from the state Historic Preservation Officer.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, motion carries.
Yeah, those are all the items we have off the agenda.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
Move.
All right, got a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the consent agenda carries.
Under ordinances this evening, as I said, we're going to change the order just slightly. We're gonna address item 8B1 first. Item 8B1 is Blake Rice requesting pre-zone 24.03 acres from rural to limited development district on property located on the north side of Wire Road, east of the Auburn soccer complex. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion seconds. Anyone in the council who has a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna deny unanimous consent.
So by denying unanimous consent on 8B1, that also will postpone items 8A and item 8B2.
Can you explain what happens now that we've denied unanimous consent?
These will come back on your agenda for the October 6th council meeting and it will be then just someone moves to approve and you vote.
So there'd be no need to ask unanimous consent again at that meeting?
Correct.
Right.
There still would be a public hearing, correct?
There will be a public hearing back on October 6th, yes.
Yeah. The reason that I denied unanimous consent, if, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Bob. Yeah?
Oh, I just felt in the last couple of days, there's been several moving parts to this that I didn't feel I could adequately make a, an informed decision. And the degree of contact that I've had with the public about this issue, I thought it would be more appropriate to take a breath and have a look at it again with perhaps some clearer, a clearer plan that I can really see and get my head around.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Appreciate you letting us know. Okay.
Mayor, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, Tommy.
Would it be improper to go ahead and have the public hearing tonight since we got, I'm sure we got people on this Zoom meeting that want to speak to it?
Councilman Dawson, normally we would wait and do that at the meeting that we're making the decision on. I would say to those people that are with us tonight that certainly under Citizens Open Forum, if they would like to address the council, they only have three minutes, but they can certainly address us at that point in time. Under the regular rules, you would normally not have the public hearing until the night that you address the, that's how it's supposed to work. I'm not saying we've always done it that way. That's how it's supposed to work.
I understand, but they, at, at the end of our meeting tonight, if they want to wait, they can speak to us for three minutes about the issues.
They sure can. And then they could come back during the public hearing in three weeks and speak to us.
And be heard again.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Anyone else?
Mayor, we got a question on this. I don't know if we can answer this at this time, if we need to wait. But I know we're not going to go into detail and deliberate on it, but can, is it appropriate for Mr. Boston to explain to us what pre-zoning really means? I know we've approved a lot of zoning requests in the past, but pre-zoning thing, I think we're gonna have to consider over the next couple of weeks while we're waiting on the, on the October meeting. But can we sort of tell us what pre-zoning means at this point or should we wait on that as well?
Boston, what would you say?
So basically, it's indicating to the applicant that the council is willing to give a limited development district zoning to that property, should that property be annexed into the city. They don't want to annex the property into the city if the council is not willing to give them limited development district zoning. So you are signaling to them that you are going to give them limited development district zoning on that property, which then would allow them to go and annex into the city. So it's pre-zoned before they annex it in.
Okay, thank you. I guess we can discuss that more when we have the commit, the packet meeting next time around. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask a question and, and I think you answered it, but is that why we was changing from number two? I mean, the number one, B?
Well, we switched places with the two items on the agenda.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. All right.
No problem. Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to the next item.
Item 8B3 is Brett Basquen requesting to rezone 4.21 acres from rural to limited development district on property located at 2449 Morse Mill Road. Planning Commission recommended approval of this request by a vote of eight to one. A public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening?
Yes, I do, Mayor Anders. I'm gonna deny unanimous consent.
Okay. So we will then, by denying unanimous consent on 8B3, and we will also postpone 8B4 and under resolutions, item 9A.
Okay. So this will once again be on our October 6th meeting as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just a kind of a closing comment on this before we have other decisions. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just, before we get into the business, I just want to say for the, for the council, for the staff, for any representatives of any of these projects, it's important, I know this is a, one of those times we've got three weeks between meetings, normally we have two, this time we've got three. I would encourage all of us to invest in learning about these projects, to what level you need to learn about it, ask the questions, do the research, mustn't wait till the last minute to where we have, as Mr. Griswold said, that work session on Friday before October 6th. Let's go ahead. If time avails us to go ahead and dig in and, and start getting ahead of this. These are two significant projects that a lot of people have got time invested in. There's a lot of interest in it, the people who live nearby. And whatever we can do to be proactive in, in making our determinations and coming to our conclusions, I encourage us to do. So a little editorial comment from the mayor tonight. All right, Mr. Boston, resolutions?
Under other business this evening, we have item 10A as a resolution extending the state of local emergency.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Questions or comments? And this would be as a resolution, so go ahead. Yeah, questions, comments? Ms. Whit?
Yeah, yes. How did we determine the date? October the 7th?
It was the day after our next council meeting.
So the governor's orders go through October the 2nd. And the numbers haven't really indicated a huge swing with the actions we've taken. I'm just curious why we wouldn't entertain October the 2nd if we had to call a meeting or, or at least had the language that it mirrored what the governor's orders stated.
Ms. Whit, I understand where you're coming from. Certainly, that is to the council's prerogative tonight. If you'd like to change that date, is that not correct, Jim? That could be amended. We could amend that tonight and change that to October 2nd. It would involve a special call meeting, which we've done before, and to discuss what we would be doing at that point in time, so. Any other?
Yeah, and then the other comment I just want to make is that the Alabama Beverage Licenses Association has, will be releasing an Alabama bar promise with some things that mirror what we're asking establishments to adhere to, which is the governor's orders. And I just would like for us to maybe encourage our local entities to make a pledge to, to follow that promise. And if we can get a considerable amount of sign-on to that promise, which will be released this week, Thursday, I believe, then I would like to maybe possibly consider looking at how we fare through the Labor Day 14-day window. And then it almost may even be worthwhile calling a meeting afterwards to see if we can get buy-in from all of our entities and for this promise and this pledge and maybe revisit this after the action tonight. Just, that was just a comment.
Sure. Any other comments or questions from the council?
Do we know how many citations have been issued since we adopted the, since the council adopted the resolution?
I believe we have issued 14. I think we issued five to businesses and we issued nine last weekend to house parties.
Thank you.
Jim, just to clarify real quickly, the safer at home order expires October 2nd, but the, the state of emergency or health emergency is November 8th for the governor. Just to clarify, there is a slight difference in the safer at home versus the other. Just wanted you to have that info.
Sure, thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. Anybody else?
Hey, I'd like to just, you know, I may have jumped the gun there. I appreciate nobody interrupting me there at the committee of the hall. I guess that wasn't really for, for comments and thoughts, but, you know, I, I understand and respect what we're, what we're dealing with here, you know, and, and the different opinions and concerns, legitimate concerns and, and legitimate, you know, health issues that, that we're, we're struggling through. I just don't, you know, with, with nine, nine citations to a house party, you know, really just, you know, I appreciate that number being brought out, you know. Doesn't prove my point, but it just proves that we're, we're having to police us all over, not just downtown. And so I just hate to see, you know, someone whose, whose livelihood depends on, you know, a normal course of business be completely shut down, you know, by, by some actions that we take. And I, you know, our, I asked at our last meeting, you know, where, and I didn't mean to be disrespectful by calling it an arbitrary timeframe, but I mean, we're just throwing numbers and dates and ideas out there, trying to do the best we can. I just, you know, I'd like to see, I'd like to see everyone given a fair chance to, to run their business in normal course of actions. And that's all. Anyway, I'm sorry for jumping the gun at the committee of the hall.
It was good. You've got some well-put-together thoughts, Jay, and that's fine. We're all, we're all judging into territory that we've never been in before, so it's all right. Connie, I think you were saying something, but right then I didn't, was, was I right on that? Were you about to say something?
I was. Out of all the council members, Beth breaks up and I was trying to see what that last comment that she made. I can't understand what she was saying in her last comment.
Sure. She, she was asking about potential of October 2nd being the deadline for this extension as opposed to October 6th and that was because that's the same day that the governor's safer-at-home order expires. And so, so this would be the same day as that, which does make a lot of sense. And then she also mentioned a, and I'll, I'll let her get into that, that the Alabama Bar Association has offered maybe a plan or a platform. Why don't you go ahead, Ms. Whit?
Sure, yes. The Alabama Bar Licenses Association has a promise that they're asking all bar owners and establishments to sign off on, which basically follows the safer-at-home mandate, which is in place. But it gives, I guess, more of a, they're signing off each business owner. And my thought was if we could get that promise signed by our local entities who that falls under, then maybe we could revisit that if our Labor Day numbers don't escalate. And if we can have an opportunity to give them the right to say that they're gonna police their own business and not have us police it for them.
Get all that, Ms. Stitch? Ms. Stitch, Sarah?
Okay, I'll just do it. Okay, thank you, Beth.
Yeah, not a problem, not a problem.
Council just, I did get a, a message from our Public Safety Director who told me that the, as of today, hospitalizations are 26 with COVID and seven people on ventilators.
Do we know that, again, do we know the breakdown in the, is that, is that Auburn residents?
We, we don't know that at this point.
On the, in, in correlation with what we're gonna talk about next, how, if we do an entertainment district, how is that gonna, how would that, how, how do these two ideas dance? With, I mean, we're gonna, I mean, there's gonna be a quarantine there or a, quarantine's not the right word, but a roped-off area, basically that folks will be able to, to be outside of establishments and drink alcohol. But not, but I guess they wouldn't, they could still consume alcohol in the establishment as long as they're sitting down. Is that kind of the thought on that if we adopt the entertainment district?
So I'll give you my thought on it. The reason why I thought, after speaking or hearing from some of the local businesses, where they wanted to have the opportunity to be able to serve alcohol outside and kind of get customers through their, not necessarily inside their establishment, but through their establishment quickly, give them the alcohol, let them leave, stay outside with it. I looked at it as a way of actually helping the social distancing by not forcing people to have to go inside, especially during the football games, assuming that we have more people here than normal. Not forcing them inside to partake, like giving the businesses the opportunity to serve outside and then let the customer leave with the beverage outside instead of forcing them to stay in there and drinking it.
When we beat Kentucky and, and go roll tumors, what, I mean, how, I'm just thinking on that, what are the limitations right now to the governor's order regarding crowd size? I, I'm, I'm, I don't, I don't know at this moment. I can look it up. Is it 50 people?
I think it is 50. However, that's one of those things that it's hard to enforce.
Sure.
We, we looked the other way, basically, when the protests were going on in downtown Auburn. You know, there were more people gathered than what the governor's order allowed, but there's sometimes, we just have to do what we have to do.
Yes, sir.
There, there is the possibility that we could ask Auburn University. There, there is the possibility that we could ask Auburn University not to roll, not to have rolling. I'm not advocating for that, but that is a possibility that we could ask them.
Mr. Buston, would you say the, discussing the rolling tumors has been, is an ongoing discussion with our public safety department and our staff right now? Okay.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, for what it's worth, I think it'd be a travesty not to allow Roland Tumors Corner, if we win, and we're gonna, we're gonna allow people to protest some of our police officers. I, I can't go along with that.
We can call Roland Tumors Corner a protest. Sounds good to me.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Whitten, would you say that you would offer October 2nd as an amendment to this resolution? Are you formally doing that? Would you like to?
Sure. I will move to amend the resolution for the end of the emergency resolution to expire on October the 2nd, at the same time as the governor's safer at home mandate.
Okay. Give me a second. Need a second. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
Vote on that.
Do what?
You need to vote on that.
Okay. So we have a motion of second, all in favor of moving the expiration date to October 2nd as opposed to October 7th? Please say aye.
We're gonna discuss it.
Okay, good point, Kelly. Thank you, man. Yes, sir. Let's discuss it.
I think if, if we do that and we decide to make a change, we gotta call a special meeting. Is that right?
Yes, we would have to call a special meeting to deal with this. Exactly right.
Or we could leave it as, as written on the 7th, which is the day after a regular meeting.
And that's exactly right. And you could presume that we would come back during the committee of the whole on October the 6th properly and discuss it at that point in time would make some kind of logical sense, I would think.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for reminding me to have a discussion. Yes, go ahead, Bob.
For Mr. Mayor or Mr. Buston, I presume, do we have any indication of Governor Ivey's plans going forward as we get closer to this date? Do you anticipate an extension from the state of Alabama?
I, I talked to her chief of staff yesterday. I do, I do believe, and of course, it's too early and he wouldn't give me any type of, and they, they still haven't been able to, they don't have enough data to make all the decisions they need to make. So, but I would be, I would not be surprised if something was extended. But I would also not be surprised if there was some relief given to some areas too. Okay? But it's still two weeks away and they've got a lot of resources studying and watching everything that's going on. And I think that's obviously a very fluid situation. But I would be very surprised if, if pieces of that didn't extend, absolutely. Do not know how long that would possibly be.
Mayor, I've got a follow-up question.
Sure.
For our, you know, for our business community, for folks that own businesses, projecting and kind of, you know, things can't just, the train takes a minute to get it started. So is there a way, I mean, do, do we necessarily have benchmarks that we're trying to, to hit? I mean, is, where we know we're going to be to that point where we'll, we'll be able to pull back this as the governor's going to do too? I mean, do we have those kind of things in mind? I mean, what, what kind of data can they look to? Can the business community look to to say that we're seeing improvement? I mean, is that, I guess that'd be tied to infections and hospitalizations. Is that fair?
From what Jim and I were told, Auburn University, when we met with them, their number one thing they look at is how many people are being hospitalized here locally. Their primary concern is, is not allowing what they're doing and what they're responsible for to overrun our healthcare system here locally. So I believe that is the number one criteria that they're watching. And that was communicated to myself and Mr. Buston in a meeting that we had with the president and the chief operating officer of the university. I'm sure that obviously how many of Auburn University students that are testing positive is something that they're watching very acutely as well.
Have, have they given you an opinion of how they're feeling about the la, the latest trends? I mean, since school has started, I know we've had some kind of peak testing and then it's, I think we had a little bit of lower number. I mean, have they, have they given any kind of insight on their thoughts on that?
Sure, as I stated earlier in the, in the meeting, they, they're very pleased with the numbers that we've received this week that Auburn University reported today as far as the number of infections. That with the fact that we've got less hospitalizations today than we even had yesterday, I believe are all positive trends. Their communication to me was, this is not, they feel like it's time to continue to, to push ahead with what we're doing. It's not time to let our foot off the gas. They believe that the next two or three weeks coming out of the Labor Day holiday, getting past the first home football weekend, getting into October, they believe those are crucial times to trying to finish out a school, an academic semester at the end of November to get us through up into October. That's the communication that I've received, not only from the medical leadership of Dr. Cam, but certainly from Mr. Pellon, which came from Dr. Gooch and General Burgess.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Any other questions? Right now, we have a motion of second to amend the date to October the 2nd of the expiration of this emergency order. That is currently what we're in the middle of talking about. Is there any other comments or questions regarding that? Okay. So at this point in time, we're going to vote on that. So what you're voting on now is to move the expiration date from October 7th to October 2nd. Okay? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. I'm sorry, because of Zoom, guys, it's gonna be best that we do this through a, a roll call. I apologize if we were a person, I could tell, but there's some feedback there. Lindsay, would you please do a roll call of this?
Sure. Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Nay.
Griswold?
Nay.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Nay.
Smith?
No.
Taylor? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you? No? Whitten?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes. What was the, what was the invite there, Ms. Lindsay?
Five noes. Four yes, five noes.
Okay, all right, so it fails. So we're still back to October the 7th then, okay? So now we have a resolution before you that expires on October the 7th. I'll, I'll take a motion of second. We can have discussion on it. We've already had that, we've already had that, so, okay, excuse me. Well, it's happened since then. All right, so we have a motion of second on that. Is there any further discussion then on the current resolution? Okay. Seeing it here and none, then we will vote on this. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I didn't hear a single oppose.
Nay.
There's one.
I think we have a lot of feedback.
Okay, Lindsay, let's do a roll call, please.
Dawson?
No, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Hovey?
No, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
No, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
I'm very conflicted on this, but I will vote yes.
Anders?
Yes. Lindsay, those votes again?
Six yes, three no. Corners.
Item 10B is a resolution creating a downtown entertainment district for the first two Auburn University football games.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Any discussion?
I do. So we're going to ask our public safety to make sure that each establishment has an outside bar to make sure that they're serving people outside who are standing up to have a beverage versus inside, going into the bar to get a beverage and walking out with it.
No. I, I think what we will be asking our public safety folks is just to enforce the governor's orders. The outside has nothing, we already have the provision in our emergency order that if you have an outside bar, you can walk up to the bar to, to grab a drink. So they won't be, that's not something they would be enforcing. They would still be enforcing the distancing, masking, that type of stuff.
But what if you don't have a natural outside bar? You have to have a makeshift outside bar because it's entertainment district?
I'm not sure what they usually do in entertainment districts, if they do makeshift bars or not.
They walk up to the bar inside.
Which is against our ordinance.
Right, they won't be able to walk up to the bar inside.
But, but they could set up a bar outside?
Well, however they did it in, the entertainment districts that we had allowed people to carry alcohol outside.
But they can't walk to the bar with a beer.
No, I guess, not the inside bar.
They would have to, it will be up to the establishment. They can have it, they can be standing outside and the server can take it to them outside, take their order and get it. But they would need to comply either to have an outside bar or you're gonna have to be seated inside and drink it inside. And they'll have to handle that of their own accord. A lot of places during COVID were not, when we were completely shut down, we're not allowing people to enter their premise. It doesn't work here, but they did have a little counter in their doorway. But they'll have to figure out and meet both orders to councilperson Whitten's question. They would have to comply with that. And, and you're right, councilperson Hovey, you wouldn't be able to order a drink at the bar and then take it off premise because that's violating the other rule. You'd have to, you have to be served, seated or served directly outside and then walk away with it.
Perfect.
Understood.
So Mr. Buston, for people that have the ability to set up an outside bar, can they set up an outside bar?
Yes.
Okay.
So. Mr. Mayor, could.
Do we expect a number of businesses to do that? Jim, Megan, do we expect a number of businesses to set up temporary bars to these days outside?
I would expect, we, we actually had the request.
Okay.
That those that have the ability to do that, we did have a request that that's what they wanted to do. And that's why we're bringing this forward to you.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry, there was a number of y'all who wanted to say something. I, I don't know who was first, so why don't we just, who'd like to say, who'd like my comment?
I'll, I'll take a go at it, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Bob.
So I think you just answered what I was about to ask. That this initiative came to the city from the business owners downtown as a, as a creative way of being able to maintain their business on select days?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I fully support it. And I, I think this is, I mean, as far, if, if we're trying to find a compromise, you know, for the situation that we're in, I just feel like we've, we've, we've helped complicate it. So I'm, I'm fully in support of, of our entertainment district and hope that we'll be, you know, we'll, we'll help them construct any temporary bar and any permits associated with doing so would be, would be expedited.
Thank you, Jay. Anyone else?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'm opposed to it because I feel like we're asking our police officers to do one thing one month and then another thing the next month. So I don't think they really know what they need to do. So I'm opposed to it for that matter. It's confusing to me for the police especially.
Mr. Buston, do you, do you have a feel from our public safety as far as having an entertainment district on these next two Saturdays? Are they comfortable with that? They understand what's the attempt is, what we'd be asking them to do?
I think they understand, as, as I said before, they will do what council asks. You know, obviously, this is not, as you mentioned, this is something we're, we're new to. We're trying to feel our way through. We're trying to be as accommodating as we can to our local businesses while at the same time being cognizant of what we're being asked to do by the university and the healthcare providers. It's a compromise. It's not going to be all one side or the other. Maybe we're making everybody unhappy instead of just one group unhappy. But what we're trying to do is, is compromise with the business owners, compromise with those who think that, that we need to be more strict. And this is what, what we've come up with.
Ask the question so I can be clear on it. So you said there's a request, is that a written request? So when it, when it starts, y'all know exactly the businesses that want the outside and the ones that are gonna stay on the inside?
No, we don't. We've had, we've had.
Something that they just requested from the city as a whole, anything that they gotta submit to the, to your department to say, hey, our business is going to the outside. And so we gotta get it approved. Nothing like. You understand what I'm saying?
I would just, y'all, Jim, you correct me if I'm wrong. I, I would characterize this as an effort of some businesses that have asked us to consider available them more opportunities on these game weekends to increase their business. Because the game weekends are not going to be certainly what we're used to and because times have been very hard and difficult, they just asked us to consider allowing them to do business maybe in a different way, a little bit different way on these Saturdays. And so that's what we're bringing to you is, is, is the mechanism to try to make that happen.
I don't have a problem with it. I was just trying to understand when he said request. So I was, I was just trying to figure out when you said the word, when you used the word request, what are you saying? Are they requesting something from the city or it was just a suggestion?
It was a request for us to create an entertainment district, which would allow them to serve alcohol outside. Am I, is that correct, Ms. Ms. Crouse and Mr. Buston?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I was just trying to get a clarification on that.
Sure. Yeah, not a problem.
Real quick, on, has there been any thought given to block, potentially blocking off roads to a certain extent within the entertainment district that would eliminate if we're gonna have folks drinking outdoors or, or con, it would kind of minimize congregating and also kind of minimize the potential for automobile and folks with alcohol meeting one another out, 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 out in the entertainment district?
One of the things that we specifically were asked not to do by public safety is to not close off the streets, at least not till we can see how, you know, we may come back and ask to close off the streets for the second one or the third one, if we have another one. But we were asked not to close off the streets for the first one.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Kelly, I got a couple of questions. We've met, we've gone back and forth on some things when, as well as the state. Is it the city's requirement that we serve while seated or is that the state requirement?
The city's.
Okay. All right. So do we have the option of amending it during entertainment district times? So I mean, that would kind of avoid the quandary that we've been talking about, about having two different sets of rules.
No, you just, you, you just passed the emergency order, which the only real thing in the emergency order is that you have to be seated to get served.
Okay, all right, because that's not specifically in this thing that we're, that you emailed to us. That's why I didn't, wasn't sure where the, the stand-up, sit-down provisions really are. Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep. Okay, any other questions? Any other points that need to be made, brought out? I mean, we've done a great job, council, you've done a great job making us think through all of this, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to point out, I'm not against the downtown businesses trying to make money. That's what they're down there for, and I sympathize with them. Sympathize with all our business owners right now in this time we're going through. However, I, I would never have told, as this police chief, I would never have told the city manager or the city council that I couldn't do something. We always try to get it done. But I did always wish I had somebody on the council that would speak up for me. So I'm speaking up for them tonight. And I just hate to put them in that position. I know. And, uh, I just hate to put them in that position. I know they can do it. They do a fine job. But, uh, I I know deep down they probably don't want to do it, but that's that's my thoughts on it.
We understand, Tommy. Thank you for your authentic response as always. We appreciate it. Anyone else? You know, the devil's always in the details of these items. Uh, I think at the heart of hearts, we're trying to do something that helps our small businesses. It was their idea. It was a couple of them's idea to do this. Um, we certainly don't expect eighty eight thousand people to be here next Saturday, but we have been told from our local hotels that they they're they're close to being full and that they expect a lot of people to be here and staying in their hotels and we certainly want to try to be as inviting as we can to allow people to come into Auburn and have a good time and enjoy their time here, have a great meal, have something good to drink, hopefully buy a shirt or a hat or something while they're here in town and spend some money with us and, uh, make our economy better and, uh, and help these small business owners who have been in a very difficult situation for the last six months. So that's the heart of the matter. Obviously, the details of these kind of things are difficult. I believe I would just say that we've asked for one home game and one away game, and there's opportunity to evaluate whether this is a good idea or a bad idea or an idea that needs to be altered or changed some as we move forward into the rest of the season. But that's just, that's how I'm thinking about this right now. But I certainly understand everything everybody's brought forward, and the last thing we want to do is create a confusion situation. Any other comments? All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve this resolution that allows entertainment districts for the uh, Auburn's first home football game on September twenty sixth and then actually the day of Auburn's first away football game on October the third. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, sir.
Okay, Lindsay, I believe that was one opposed, eight four. You got that? Okay, thank y'all. All right, Mr. Bustin?
And the last item is item ten C is a resolution approving an off premise retail beer and wine alcohol beverage license for Tiger Pride Food Mart LLC located at nineteen seventy-two East Clan Avenue.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion, second C. Comments or questions from the council? Here you none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Those are all the items we have on the agenda this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bustin. This time is, uh, uh, the opportunity for citizens open forum. This is your opportunity as a citizen. If you'd like to address the city council, uh, please raise your hand on, uh, through Zoom and give us your name and address for the record. I will remind you that you have three minutes. Uh, three minutes to speak to us. Ms. Brumfield, you were starting earlier. Uh, I do not know. It looks like you're still on the line. If you would like to, you can start now.
Yes, sir. Um, I'm here. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, thank you for your patience.
That's fine. I apologize for, um, stepping in at the wrong time earlier, but.
It's okay. It's complicated.
Y'all been expecting with me. Um, I am sure you have heard about another potential quarry coming to the north side, uh, northeast side of Lee County on Lee Road one seventy-seven and Highway twenty-nine in the Beulah community. This is the same group as was on Highway four thirty-one. It's Creekwood Resources and Warehouse or Timber Company. This quarry will affect you just as the other quarry would have. This quarry will be directly on the Hollow Walker Creek. The Hollow Walker Creek provides drinking water to Auburn just as the Soga Hatchie Creek does as well. With this quarry just being across Interstate eighty-five approximately one mile from the Opelika Industrial Park, um, new interest to the area may be decreased. If a quarry is established, that would mean two quarries located in this county, which would also be a deterrent for newcomers to this area. You are in opposition to this quarry coming to Highway four thirty-one. The new location is only six miles from the hi, from Highway four thirty-one location. We are asking you to please write a resolution in opposition to this quarry coming to Beulah, Opelika area to help us stop this quarry.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brumfield. We appreciate that. All right. Who would be next?
David Ennis.
All right, David Ennis.
Uh, thank you very much, David Ennis. I live in the Coderna Acres neighborhood, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
What's your, what's your street address, Mr. Ennis, please?
Two hundred Coderna Acres. Uh, um, so I want to speak about the Wire Road development proposal, which was on the agenda tonight. Um, let me just say I support the proposed, the postponement of this vote in the interest of arriving at a better compromise. Um, one of the issues that I see is that I think if the Wire Road agenda item would have moved forward tonight, the council would have ended up voting on a very different proposal, which, uh, from what was described in the council packet. The residents of the Wire Road neighborhood have spent an enormous amount of time over the last year or so providing feedback and voicing concerns during the future land use study and proposals related to this property. Uh, this has come in the form of attending meetings, speaking with city, uh, officials and sending countless letters and making phone calls. So I just wanted to quickly summarize for you tonight, uh, what the main concerns are in the hopes that, uh, we can, we can, uh, move forward on this. Um, so what the, one of the main objections to the proposal is was described in the packet deals with the lot sizes. Uh, as you may be aware, the surrounding area, um, in, uh, is already developed and it's developed, uh, mostly as rural. Um, there are many residents that live in this area and it's including right across the road from where this was proposed. And putting lot sizes a quarter acre next to that just, um, just i- is is not in keeping with the the feel of the neighborhood. Another major concern has to do with traffic and traffic safety. As you know, this is right next to the soccer complex. Uh, there's already traffic concerns on that road due to when the soccer complex lets in and out and adding a subdivision entrance to that uh, would only exacerbate that. Um, and so there's some ideas about how to deal with that. And then finally has to do with the commercial development aspect, which was just added recently. Um, if you've been in that area, there there's no, there there's no, um, it it just doesn't make sense to put a commercial district in the middle of what is a rural area. Um, and so I just want to make it clear that the neighborhood has demonstrated a willingness over the last year to work with the desires of the applicant and develop the property in question so it does not destroy the rural character of our neighborhood. Um, and we'll be continuing to, willing to do that over the next few weeks until the next council meeting. So I just want to say that I believe that Auburn can do better than the proposal that was described in the packet and that I hope that we can all live up to that over the next couple of weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next is John Waltrip. He's gone, okay. Is that? Okay. No one, no, you're good.
Emily Myers.
All right, Emily Myers.
Unmute. Hey, this is Emily Myers. I'm a resident at six hundred Coderna Acres. I've been here for thirty-three years. I travel Wire Road very frequently and since the advent of the soccer fields, we have a significant traffic issue. Um, my concern is, is that we, if we add fifty to seventy-one houses on the other side of the soccer complex um, and the roundabout that's due to go in at Cox Road, we are going to have a backup all the way to the, um, roundabout on those nights, which is five days a week pretty much of soccer. So we're concerned, um, from a traffic standpoint, um, I was in a fairly significant car accident recently where someone pulled out right in front of me, not on Wire Road, but they were clearly not paying attention. And so traffic issues are of paramount concern to me at this point. Um, I do agree with David Ennis, my neighbor, in terms of let's have a transitional type of neighborhood rather than this massive uh, development, which is not in keeping with the current, um, rural nature of the area. Um, and finally, the commercial development. Well, um, any kind of small business that would go in close to a soccer field and a development would probably have to be a gas station and or liquor store and or small grocery store, which we have one a mile down the road. And as you know, those, those types of businesses are subject to robberies and crime and um, and light. I mean, there's going to be significant light pollution as a result of all of this, but, um, so that's all I have to say. I I hope that we can come up with a a reasonable solution to this issue. I know the Conways want to develop the property and I understand that. Um, but maybe making the lot sizes bigger, maybe thinking about the prop, the traffic issues, doing a traffic study, which I have yet to see and and so on. So I thank you for your time and I appreciate your listening.
Thank you, Ms. Myers.
Mr. Walter, stack.
All right, Mr. Waltrip, we're going to call on you. I believe you are back with your hand raised. Is that true? Uh, he was just there. Okay, uh, Mrs. Charles Branch. Mr. Branch, you're next. He's muted. Mr. Branch, you're, you may have your phone muted.
Uh, I had trouble getting my cursor on the microphone. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Wish you're can.
Uh, my name's Charles Branch. Uh, I live at, uh, two thousand Sunset Drive. We've been here for thirty years, so we're not the oldest ones in the neighborhood, but we're close to it. Uh, I think most of the neighbors that I have talked with are not trying to oppose the idea of a neighborhood at this location. Uh, there are some things that we think could change that would make it more attractive, especially for the people who live in it. My biggest concern is the the new intersection that would be on Wire Road. We already have a soccer complex entering, a private road, a fire station, two other businesses, I believe, and eight driveways in that one block area. And it's already dangerous. It scares me when I go over there. My suggestion would be that if the developers wanted to, they could solve that problem simply because they own property all the way to the proposed roundabout. And seems to me that it would be fairly easy to modify this plan and annex a slightly additional, a piece of property that would take it all the way to the roundup and then make the property end of the roundup instead of, instead of directly on to Wire Road. It just seems crazy to me that we've spent millions of dollars on this roundup, which, uh, roundabout, I'm sorry, that, uh, should add to the safety and now we're talking about doing something that would make it less safe. It just seems to me like it would be very easy to resolve and perhaps the developers might even consider doing that on their own. I know you can't force them to annex property that's, that's, uh, not proposed, but they could certainly do it if they wanted to. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Branch. Appreciate it. All right, third time's the charm. Mr. Waltrip.
Hello, my name is John Waltrip. I live at twenty-three oh two Waverly Parkway in Opelika. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
On April sixteenth, twenty nineteen, the Auburn City Council approved to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Hurricane Electronic Inc. For the P twenty-five mobile radios alone with related equipment for a total price of one million, two hundred fifty-one thousand five hundred forty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. The members of Auburn City Council approved the purchase of the P twenty-five mobile radio on April sixteenth, twenty nineteen. On the resolution for the Montgomery Metro Communication Cooperative District, it says, "We are requesting to purchase P twenty-five portable and mobile radios for the police and fire division as well as related equipment to install in our nine-one-one center." This clause was not mentioned in the resolution, and we require the city council to approve the use of encryption for Auburn Police and Fire Division. The Auburn City Council has not approved the use of encryption since this item was not listed in the resolution of the April sixteenth, twenty nineteen meeting. I am asking the city council to draft the resolution at the next city council meeting, banning the use of encryption keys for Auburn Police and Fire talk groups. In a meeting in April, council member Driss Walt asked the city manager what impact this will have on the public ability to listen to scanners, for example. The city manager stated that there would be scanners that are going to scan. It is difficult because the channels are digital. The way that scanners work now is you have a scanner and the channels are programmed on radioreference dot com and you download the frequency and the channel to the scanner. There was no mention in this meeting concerning the use of encryption on Auburn Police and Fire Talk Group channel. The public and the media's ability to listen to Auburn Police and Fire has been removed since the talk groups are encrypted in June of twenty twenty. Opelika Police and Fire, Lee County Sheriff's Office and ETS Dispatch are not encrypted. I am asking the city council to ban the use of encryption keys at the next city council meeting. I will look forward to talking with the city council about this issue. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Jeffrey Glasscock. Okay. Jeffrey, we're being told that you have an older version of Zoom, so it will not allow you to.
We can go ahead and promote him to panelists. Okay, Mr. Glasscock.
Are you there, Mr. Glasscock?
Uh, yes, I'm there. I'm sorry.
Okay, we we made it happen. Go right ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, we're, uh, twenty-two forty-nine Wire Road. Um, my residence is actually directly across from the proposed development on Wire Road and, I mean, I would echo similar things that other citizens and my neighbors have said. Um, you know, having more commercial property out there, I would be curious to know if there's a demonstrated need for that. Um, it just, and you know, I just can't, can't really see that with, we've got this gas station down the street from us that seems to have, um, some pads empty that they can't even get filled over there. So I'm not even certain there's a demonstrated need for additional commercial property and also the having, um, less houses per acre, I think, would, you know, um, us personally, we moved out of Grove Hill to an area that that had, is zoned, as has been said, rural, where the houses are a little more spread out. Um, the neighbors are not on top of each other, and that's the reason we moved into this area. Um, this is kind of something that I feel, I've lived in Auburn my entire life, um, is rare, is is becoming more rare in this area. And it is, it's kind of makes me sad as a lifelong citizen to see that there's a potential to have the just densely populated houses right across the street from us. I'd really would hope if this is something that's going to move forward, that we could have something that would more fit with the neighborhood. We've got a a lot of residences, our neighbors, that have lived here for, uh, many, many decades and I just, we just kind of feel like it's, you know, it's unfair to the surrounding area to to put something similar to Grove Hill right across the street from, you know, where we currently are and 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 just kind of wanted to voice that. Thank you.
Thank you.
You would else? Yeah, there's one person, there's one person, Katie Jackson.
Okay, Katie Jackson, you're next.
Thank you. Is it coming through?
Yes, you are.
Well, thank you for the chance to just say something. I first of all, I want to say I'm really glad to know that we are going to have a little more time to talk about the issue on Wire Road. I am on two-two, two-five Wire Road is the address, um, that but that where my sister now lives at the moment and where my, um, we both co-own that property.
Katie, what is that address, please?
Two-two, two-five Wire Road.
Thank you.
So we are literally almost directly across from where the entrance and exit will be for this new, um, development and certainly I can repeat all of the reasons that we're concerned about it, but also wanted to just say that, um, there, there just. there, there are just so many things I think that we haven't clarified that I would love to see happen between now and when we, when this comes up again. And I think that's one of the concerns that I have. My sister and I moved out to that property in 1964. So we're the old timers out there. And right before I went to Mrs. Sneaker's kindergarten is when we moved there. So, um, we've been there a long time and we obviously are very attached to that whole area and to, um, our family's home place. But we also understand that development is gonna happen and we, we, we're not against that, but we really, really, really want it to be smart development and one that does retain that unique character that's out there, but also makes it still safe for all of us who live out there and anybody who's traveling that road. So I'm just really wanting to say thank y'all for giving a chance to let's find out more about this. And I'd really encourage, I welcome the opportunity for us to have more clarity on what this is gonna mean and how we can solve some of these problems before it's voted on again. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I believe, I believe that is all. Okay. Thank you for everybody that, that spoke to us tonight. All right. That's it. The citizens open forum. I have a move to adjourn.
I'm moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you for your time.